Let's go ahead and stand. And go ahead, we're gonna have Anthony Mendoza Nunez from John Muir Elementary School, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please go ahead, Anthony.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the public. My name is Anthony Mendoza Nunez. At this time, I would like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And now, if you can step to the side, Anthony, we're gonna have our police chaplain, Tom Jones, give us our invocation, and he's gonna sing a song afterwards.
And everybody will leave. Thank you, sir. Let's pray. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come here and be about your business. God, we ask that you give the Council wisdom and guidance, Lord, that they're able to take care of the things that need to be taken care of today. And, Lord, we thank you for Anthony, we thank you for those that are in the community, we thank you for the police officers and the firemen, Lord, and we ask that you bless them, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our folks here from Fix Auto San Ana, Allstate Insurance, and the Family Promise of Orange County, are you all present? Please come on forward, and I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Amequeta to make a presentation to you at this time. So just come on down and come here by the mic, and she'll join you in just a moment.
It's half the meeting right there.
Good evening. Ooh, I don't think it's on.
If Angie can get started.
Is it on? Oh, okay, here we go. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, recognizing this group of people here that, together, donated, fixed the car, and donated it to a needy family. On November 5th, 2015, Fix Auto San Ana, in collaboration with Allstate Insurance and Promise Family of Orange County, donated reliable transportation to a needy family. The recipient, Mary Dees, is she here tonight? She couldn't make it. Okay, was gifted a Jeep Liberty. Mary relied on public transportation to get to work, but went encountered times when she wasn't able to get to work on time. Mary is a single mom who works full-time and is a student working towards a degree in criminal justice. She and her daughter Samantha, a senior in high school, strongly believe that higher education is key to increased opportunities. Mary's dream is to become a local police officer or work in juvenile hall. Fix Auto San Ana became aware of Mary's predicament through the National Auto Body Council, the NABC, Recycle Rides Initiative, an inter-industry community awareness project that provides vehicles to those in need. The program works with a number of charities that assist in locating worthy candidates for a donated vehicle. In the case of the Dees, the charity was Family Promise of Orange County, a nonprofit interfaith network that provides support to families in crisis. When coalition repair professionals at Fix Auto learned about the challenge facing the Dees, they helped in the best way they could, providing labor free of charge to repair a vehicle, a 2004 Jeep Liberty, a vehicle that Mary could depend on. Allstate Insurance donated and registered on the Dees' behalf, a 2004 Liberty SUV, providing it to Fix Auto San Ana to perform the necessary repairs. So if any of you would like to come up and say a few words, you're welcome to, before I present the certificate.
Just that it was our pleasure to be able to help somebody who was in need, and truly was a collaboration between different moving parts within the insurance industry that ended up benefiting somebody who really, really needed some help. So we're really happy we were able to cooperate and get it done for this particular lady.
So even though I wasn't able to attend, I know I received that invitation to attend this event, I'm very happy to be here tonight presenting these certificates of recognition to Fix Auto San Ana for sponsoring the Recycle Rides event, and your generosity to help a needy family. And to Family Promise of Orange County for participating in the Recycle Rides event, and your generosity to help a needy family. And finally, to Allstate for participating in the Recycle Rides event, and your generosity to help a needy family. So thank you very much for all you do in the community. Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna do a presentation on behalf of Councilwoman Martinez, who was unable to come today. She's a little bit under the weather, so if I can have Julio Cesar Guzman, please Standing to my right is Julio Cesar Guzman, and let me tell you a little bit about him, and then let me tell you what he did. He, well, he's done a lot of things, but this effort in particular. He graduated from Santa Ana High School, he works, is an auto mechanic, and his passion is cars and wrestling. On November 4th, a 24-year-old man was sitting on a sidewalk when a driver of a van swerved on a major street and fatally struck this man that was sitting. And then unfortunately, the driver of the van continued driving, but fortunately, Cesar was there, observed the collision, and he decided to follow the vehicle. He heroically stopped the van and managed to get the keys out, and he stopped the driver from fleeing. The suspect driver was then arrested on the basis of suspicion of a DUI and vehicular manslaughter. Caesar exemplified bravery and compassion in a moment of tragedy. His actions depict that of a larger sense of community that we are very fortunate to have existing here in San Ana. And I believe that, you know, what he did was tremendous, and he says he believes nothing is impossible, you just have to find a way, and his bravery confirms that. So I'm gonna present him a recognition on behalf of the City Council, and I wanna offer him the opportunity to maybe say a few words, and, and please, you know, know that we're very proud of you for what you did, Julio.
Thank you, everyone. Just wanted to say that I didn't wanna be another person that just lets another suspect go when I saw everything, you know? I didn't wanna be afraid, I just wanna speak out. So I encourage everyone just to speak out whenever you like see something like this going wrong, and just don't be afraid, don't be, don't try to hide, you know? Thank you.
This is a certificate of recognition. It's my honor and privilege to award it to you, Julio Cesar Guzman, in recognition for your heroic efforts. Your bravery is commendable, and, and, and the example that you set for so many in this community is something we're very, very proud of. Thank you very much. If now I can have folks from Grandma's House of Hope, Illumination Foundation, Mercy House, Southwest Community Center, I know I saw Connie Jones out there, Thomas Health Shelter, Natalie Julian, and Wise Place. As all these fine folks approach, let me just tell you that November is National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. It's a heartbreaking fact that as many as two and a half million youth per year experiencing homelessness, along with losing their home, community, friends, routines. Homeless youth also lose their sense of stability and safety. Many homeless youth are also victims of trauma, and unfortunately, many of these issues do not get addressed. While trying to survive the streets, youth are exposed to countless dangers, an increased likelihood of substance abuse, early parenthood, impulsivity, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and the vulnerability of being physically accosted. In San Ana, there's been an increase in homelessness, especially around the Civic Center area, and around the historic South Main Street area as well. Homelessness is a complex issue. It is an issue that can't be resolved overnight, and here in San Ana, we recognize the diligence and the consistent efforts of organizations that provide assistance and hope to those that are homeless. Today, we wanna take a moment to thank and recognize many organizations such as Grandma's House of Hope, Stephanie Garcia, Illumination Foundation, Yvette Dallstrom, Mercy House Living Centers, Larry Haynes, Lydia, Linda Wilson, Southwest Community Center, Connie J. Jones, Thomas Health Shelter, Natalie Julian, and Wise Place, Demona Barlow. Before I present certificates, would you all like to say a word or two about the good work that you're doing? No, Larry, no? Connie, you've never been bashful. You've, on behalf of the group, all right, there you go.
Well, Larry and I have been working for over 25 or 26 years dealing with homeless individuals, seniors, childrens in the community, and so, for no reason of theirs, they're homeless, and we have a heart to care for them, because that's what we're told by God to do. We appreciate the city of San Ana and those of you that have helped us along the way, and God bless you for all that you do to help support us.
On behalf of all of us, we'd like to extend our thanks to the city of Santa Ana for being such a terrific partner. You've been in this fight with us for well over a quarter of a century, and by the time we're done, we'll end homelessness in Santa Ana. Thank you so much.
If I may, I'd like to pass these out, and then let's take a photo as well. This is quite a group gathered here today, and again, I wanna thank Councilwoman Martinez, 'cause she's the one that organized all this. Grandma's House of Hope, Illumination Foundation, Mercy House Living Centers, Southwest Community Center, Thomas House Family Shelter, Wise Place. Let's take a photo here. Now, I'm gonna ask the clerk to administer an oath of office.
If I can please have Daniel Ramirez come to the front, please.
I, Daniel Ramirez, solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign, domestic, that I will provide true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of invasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of my, of my council.
Mr. Ramirez has just been appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report at a closed session?
Mayor and councilmembers, members of the public, we had one closed session item this evening, but we do not have any reportable actions.
Okay, let me direct our attention for a moment to the consent calendar. Let me take one speaker first, if I may, that wants to speak on a consent counter item, and that is Robert McGrath, wanting to speak, I believe, on item 25B. If you're here, please address us at this time, then we'll go straight into the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Robert McGrath, with Tri-Tech Software Systems, and here to express our pleasure and honor in being selected by the city of Santa Ana to provide an integrated software suite, including computer guided dispatch, records management system, for the police department. I would also like to thank the selection committee, in particular, Mr. Boris Duran, the IT manager, and Deputy Chief Schnabel, who executed a level of due diligence that we've really have rarely seen in the industry. It was really commendable, they did an excellent job with the utmost professionalism on behalf of the city. Tri-Tech Software Systems, we're actually based in San Diego, and we are the largest public safety company in the market today, and we are really honored and privileged to be selected by the police department. We have 20 years of experience in the software industry, and public safety is all we do. So as we're recognized as an industry leader and innovator, again, we will be able to help the city of Santa Ana, the police department, replace their legacy systems that they have in place today, some of those systems unsupported, with the latest and greatest technology that the industry can provide. That will mean better business practices, increased efficiency, increased officer safety, and an enhanced level of customer service for the citizens of Santa Ana. So with that, thank the committee, Mayor, and the selection committee on behalf of Tri-Tech. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Robert McGrath, and I don't know that we'll have any questions, but just be available in case we do, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you. With that, are there any items that councilmembers wish to pull or abstain from on the consent counter? I entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. I would now bring our attention.
Mayor Polito, can we excuse Councilmember Martinez for this meeting?
No.
I second. No, I'm just teasing.
No, all right, I motion to excuse Councilwoman Martinez. Is she watching?
Probably.
Oh, of course.
Oh, for sure.
That's why I said.
Got it, thank you. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous with Reyna voting no, though. All right, with that, 55A. 12A was part of the consent counter, I believe, but I wanna call on Mayor Protem, Vince Armento at this time.
No, just a quick question for the city attorney. I just wanted to make sure that both the mayor and I are good on 12, 12A. It's the downtown bid. I think we both participated in the past. We just had a bunch of conversations.
Yes, and you have your FPPC letters.
Got it.
So we're good. Thank you. So, thank you for that. So, item 55A, I would entertain a motion.
Schnabel, second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I would entertain a motion on 55B as in boy. Now, don't everybody speak at the same time. Councilman Reyna, would you like to make a motion on 55B?
Sure.
I'll second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 55C, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Schnabel, second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We're now on 65A. Who would like to take the lead on this?
Well, he's my commissioner.
Go ahead.
So I know that Ivan moved to Sacramento to attend college, and he would like to remain, he is the chair of the youth commission presently, and he would like to remain on the commission, but currently, he wouldn't be able to because he's not living in the city, residing in the city. So this item was brought to us, before us tonight, to make a decision whether we wanna keep it as is or change that.
And so your motion is to keep the status quo?
Well, I was just beginning, I, I, I think we are all on the same page on this, that it is important that they attend meetings and they be here, and I know teleconferencing would be a way for him to continue to participate, but is that the direction we all wanna take, is the question?
May I make a quick?
Yes, you may. Go ahead, councilmember.
And I appreciate the young man's willingness to continue to serve, but it's just, it's no different than, if you're a congressman, you have to, you have to move into the district that you represent. Otherwise, you can get scrutinized for not being a part of that community that you serve. Same goes with councilmembers. We cannot be on the Santa Ana City Council and be in another city. If I wanted to get my doctorate degree and move to Boston, I couldn't serve on this council. And so it's, it's, it's pretty simple, though I do appreciate his tenacity and his excitement to continue to serve, but I can say this to this young man, we will receive him back with open arms once he resides back in the city of Santa Ana.
I think Ivan's done a great job, and he's worked really hard, put in a lot of effort, and I, I do wanna commend him for bringing the item forward, but at this time, I think we're all in favor of leaving it as it is.
Thank you. So I would believe that the motion also includes leaving the age as it is, from 16 to 20 years, correct?
Correct.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I now would, yes, I now wanna direct our attention to item 65B. Is there a motion on the item?
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 65C, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 65D, as in David.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We're almost done with our meeting. Don't tell Councilwoman Martinez anything, okay?
She's gonna turn on the TV in a few minutes.
She might, and so they're already gone, what happened? We have three speakers, Renee Guzman, if you are, please come on down and speak, sir, followed by Idalia Velasquez, excuse me, and Carmen Silva. Please go ahead, Renee, and Idalia, if you're present, please come on forward and sit right on the first row so you can follow Renee, and Carmen Silva, if you're present, please come on down as well. Is anybody gonna require a Spanish speaker? All right, please come on down. Go ahead, Renee, you start.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council. Mayor Protem, tonight I come before you on a very sacred item that I guess you, the city council, all to consider sacred. I represent the Volunteer Center and Senior Center in Santa Ana, the 103rd and Ross. I'm also on the advisory committee, but I've come to you to ask you if any of the funds that were allocated for the city council, did they go to the Senior Center? One main reason, last Friday, we had an incident there. I was in the lobby when this happened. A young man walked in with a stick, rolling the stick around like he was some Japanese samurai. Luckily, that one of the people that were playing pool in the pool hall stepped up and tried to take the stick from him. What happened? He was fighting everybody. At the same time, he was intoxicated, so he fell. Once he was on the floor, he was subdued, but he left the center, police got there 20, 36 minutes after the call. I don't know what precedent the call was given or taken, but I think in this situation, it should have been ASAP. It didn't happen, but luckily, there's some other people in the hall there took action. The police didn't show up, they came in, took the defendant outside. What happened outside? I don't know, 'cause we weren't allowed to interfere or listen. The police did not take the stick from him, they led him across the street to the parking lot across, and they didn't take the stick from him and told him, and I heard this, not to come back to the Senior Center because he was banned from there. That's the only thing that was done. And my thing is that, there's a lot of people that could have gotten hurt that day there. Luckily, that the Lord was with us, it didn't happen, almost did though, and that's why my reason why I'm questioning, see, the funds were allocated for the center, for the fence, and the restroom. It's getting out of hand, Mr. Polito, Mayor Polito, it's getting out of hand.
Let me maybe, through the city manager, ask that he discusses with you further, may come back with a memo, and maybe include, you know, the chief of police as well, Renee.
I would appreciate that very much.
Thank you for coming down. Our city manager's right there, make sure you touch base.
Thank you.
Thank you. Idalia, are you here? Please come forward. And then we're gonna need a translator for Carmen Silva, correct? If, Madam Clerk, if you can make sure our translator is ready. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, my name is Idalia Velasquez, I'm a member of OCO, an Orange County Congressional Community Organization, a faith-based nonprofit organization, and I'm coming here to come with the question of why, last time that we came with petitions, 157 petitions for the improvements of Delhi Park, and none of the funds were allocated for any improvements there, and we come back again to ask you why, and with 200, 270 more petitions from our neighbors with the concerns from the park, with a total of 427 petitions, and we're in coordination with Rodolfo Hernandez, and that's just our question for today. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, now call upon Carmen, please.
Okay, mi nombre es Carmen Silva.
Hello, my name is Carmen Silva.
Vivo en la Orange Avenida para Sanandro en Occidental.
I live on Orange Avenue by Sanandro in Occidental.
Y sin nosotros saber, hace como cuatro o más años, cinco, fu-
Without knowing, about four or five years ago?
Fueron y pusieron, no sabemos quién, pero los- Fueron y pusieron, no sabemos quién, pero la ciudad o algo, unos papeles de, unos signs, unos letreros que dicen, "No parking anytime," y tenemos tres, este, cuadras sin que se puedan estacionar, y todos los de esos lugares se van enfrente de los que no les pusieron ese letrero.
Somebody posted some "no parking" signs, we don't know who, but around three blocks from where they can park, so they go to the section, and they take all the place.
Y quisiéramos que, por favor, los removieran porque nos ha causado muchos problemas. Mucha gente no tiene donde estacionarse, más que enfrente de su casa. Y es un verdadero problema.
We would like to request that those signs are removed. We can't park, people can't park in front of their homes, and that's a real, real problem.
Y si necesita que le traigamos las firmas, las peticiones, yo se las consigo.
And if you wish, we can bring some signs, some petitions, we can get them for you.
Let me just say, thank you very much. You know, talk to our city manager. I think that's Michelle Martinez's ward, but meet with our city manager, and, and he can, you know, see if he can follow up with us.
Thank you.
Okay? Ay no necesito que le tradujeron, ¿verdad? Dijo, "Thank you muy bien." Que le vaya, que le vaya bien. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Muchas gracias. Now, let's go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of City Council. Mayor Protem, we have a slide that we want to present. We have really, really good news here. Can you get Jorge? I think he's, oh, you got it? Oh, here it goes. Just real quick. We have received, Mayor, and members of City Council, a tremendous amount of funding for our active transportation program, much more than we could have ever imagined. The total grant, our sixteen point three-three million dollars. Want to thank you for your leadership, Mayor, all the council members, and especially Councilor Martinez. This is unprecedented. In addition to the eleven point five million dollars we recently received, we've been recommended for an additional two point three-eight million dollars for four projects that are citywide in nature, some at the elementary school, route to school, the Lincoln Pedestrian Trail, another pedestrian analysis grant, and other routes to school to protect our schoolchildren and make sure they're safe. And then, also, the state of California has recommended two point four-five million dollars in grants to install safety enhancements at twelve crosswalks, also another bike lane on Flower Street to Warner on Civic Center, and then more signal upgrades to make sure that we're safe. So, we wanted to thank all of our partners and make sure the council knows that in the public, but we've had great success in our active transportation program. The other announcement to make is that tomorrow is our annual tree lighting ceremony. Of course, the council, the mayor will be there, but we're very proud of the downtown. The lights are going to be synchronized to go on tomorrow. We expect a very robust holiday season, but tomorrow's the annual holiday tree lighting. Everybody's invited, the entire public, and we're going to have coffee and hot chocolate and some treats. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for that fine report. Council comments. Let's start with Councilor Martinez. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Let's go. Councilor Martinez, ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be very brief today. First of all, I want to congratulate our sports teams. As you all know, football is one of the sports that everyone, it's a money-making sport for high schools and so forth, and people get to, you know, come into stadiums and, and folks get really excited. But I want to congratulate our coaches here in the city of Santa Ana, because for a very long time, they thought that football was going to be dead in Santa Ana, and they're proving everyone wrong. We had five teams, five high school football teams, make the CIF playoffs. We had Santa Ana High School, we had Santa Ana Valley, we had Saddleback High School, Godinez, and Sagerstrom all make the playoffs. What's even more impressive is out of those five teams, three of them advanced to the second round. So, you have Godinez, who upset Westminster in double, or in overtime, and then you had both Sagerstrom and Santa Ana Valley advance. So, just congratulations to all of our youth out there, to our players. We have our Santa Ana, on the lower levels, we have our Santa Ana Pop Warner cheerleaders who are now in their last tournament to qualify for the national, to go to nationals in Florida, and it looks like they, they, they have a very, very good chance of making it there. So, we're very proud of our youngsters here. Today, we will not have another meeting until December, and so, I just wanted to say, you know, my favorite holiday of the year is always Thanksgiving, not just because of the food. As you know, I like to eat, but it's just the, the ability to reflect and, and give thanks once again. And I'm just so eternally grateful to be sitting up here with this council. I, I am so proud of you. I teach government. I have four classes of government. I talk about you all quite often, and about the work that, that you have been able to do, and how much I've learned from all of you. I, I thank the staff. I'm very grateful for the staff. You are all very eager, very enthusiastic. I know that sometimes, we're a little bit of a headache, and, and what I love about you is you're wonderful actors. You show, you act like it doesn't bother you, and you're still happy and smiling, and I appreciate that. And that's part of being successful and professional. Our, to our police chief, who's done a wonderful job, who's basically leading by example, and really setting a new standard here in the city of Santa Ana, I applaud you. To our city attorney, our clerk, I just want to thank you guys for your hard work, and not, last but not least, is our city manager. What a turnaround, Mr. City Manager. What a great place that you've put us in here in this city, and your leadership is something to be admired, and I'm sure everyone's learning from you here as we move forward. So, with that, I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Let's feed those that don't have an opportunity to have the kind of Thanksgiving that many of us are blessed with, and I know that there'll be an event on Friday at the Boys and Girls Club. We'll be giving out some turkeys there as well. And I just want to say, it's, let's, let's reflect and, and be thankful for what we have, and I'm truly, truly thankful to be here and to be a part of this family here in the city of Santa Ana. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Vince Armento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well said, council member. It's always hard to follow you, so I wanted to just talk about something I did on Friday that involved the city, because it was on city time, and it was, it involved city travel as well. So, on Friday, Friday the thirteenth, as you all know, I had an opportunity to be with twenty-five other colleagues from throughout the country to meet with the president's chief of staff. We met with the chief of staff, Dennis McDonough. We meet, we met with his, with the president's senior policy advisor, Valerie Jarrett, the director of housing and urban development, Julian Castro hosted breakfast for us, and Secretary of Labor, Tom Bettis, came and addressed us as well. What was interesting about that is that many people there were people who'd been with the Obama administration since the very beginning of his, of his time. So, these were folks that were with him since Iowa and New Hampshire, and worked in the White House after that, and then they went off to their respective states and became senators and legislators. So, it was exciting to be in the presence of those who are now coming to an end of an administration, because you realize there's only thirteen months left in the administration's tenure, and they're now looking at reflecting about what their legacy is going to be. And the exciting thing about it was, there were a lot of communities like Santa Ana that were there that they want to spotlight. And to me, it was a really significant moment to be sitting in the chief of staff's office in the, in the White House at two o'clock Eastern Time, right as the attacks on Paris were taking place. So, we're, we were in there, and from what I understand from a lot of those members that were with us, it's very rare to spend time in the White House in the chief of staff's conference room, but I believe, as, as I was mentioning to the city manager earlier today, the president was going to stop by and say hello, but as you know, he was called away because he did an emergency press conference on, on what was going on in Paris at the time. But, to me, what was important was that Santa Ana was at that very significant inner, inner circle, talking about some of the things that we, that we're doing, and some of the things that we've done. Because in essence, if you look at where we were eight years ago when the administration started in two thousand and eight, it's very similar to where the country was. It was, you know, there were a lot of foreclosures, there was a lot of unemployment, lack of jobs, and, you know, things by no means are completely solved, but we've come a long way together. So, we really mirror the success and the progress that we've made nationally as a country. So, we, in addition to meeting with, you know, a lot of his cabinet members and the chief of staff, we got a chance to meet with a gentleman by the name of Cody Kessler. Cody is the president's chief speechwriter. He's in the process of drafting the State of the Union for the president, and he, he asked me to see if I could send him a bio on Santa Ana, because he's looking for issue points that he wants to include in the president's speech. And he said, you know, when I was describing what our story was, he was amazed to, to know that we were the fourth most densely populated city in the country. He was amazed to know that this is a all-Latino council that was looking at a Chapter Nine bankruptcy just a few years ago. He was, you know, he was surprised to know that we're leading on the issue of workforce affordable housing, on transportation, all these things I think that the, that the, that the administration has been pushing, but because Congress can't get these through, what they've decided as an administration is to leapfrog Congress and go directly to the states and local officials and say, "Let's push these good agenda items. Let's get people to work. Let's make some accomplishments with the, with the local elected officials." So, my message to all of you is that, you know, in these last thirteen months of the, of the administration, we have a window of opportunity. And I know when we were back, Mr. City Manager, and I believe the chief of police and council member Ben Avivas, the four of us, when we, when we left and we were flying back, all of us said, "They want as much information from us as we wanted from them." So, the resources that they're looking for are legacies, are projects, are sort of poster children for the success of that administration, and what better city than Santa Ana? And I thought that it was very telling, because I'm, I'm flying out tonight, going back to DC, because I've been invited to go with another group of elected officials to talk about pro-growth progressive issues. And we're going to be hosted by Senator Warner from Virginia and Governor Markle from Delaware, and it's going to be exciting to be with that same group of folks, because there's a lot of overlap between the folks that were there on Friday and the folks that are going to be there this week. And we're talking about the things that we're talking about here, transportation, safe, public safety, all these things that I think we've embraced and we've done really well at. And finally, you know, we're starting to, you know, we're starting to get national attention to those. So, by the way, Mr. Director of Planning, Hassan, I shared with them the idea of the second, of our projected ordinance for the second home on the property. The secretary of HUD, Julian Castro, loved that idea, by the way. So, he wanted me to copy with, he wanted me to copy his chief of staff with some more information. So, these are things that, you know, were innovative, they talked about adjusting the AMI, but they liked what we were doing. So, I came back very excited, and I think there's a lot of agenda items that the administration would like us to promote and to support and adopt, that, that they would give us a lot of, a lot of, you know, support on as well. So, we've got a good, a good opportunity. I came back very excited, and so, I'm back again this week. So, I'll keep you posted once I get back after Friday. My kids were like, "Why are you going back to DC? Don't you know there's, you know, there's a lot of, not only excitement going on, but there's a lot of danger." But, look, I think what happened in Paris, you know, sort of transitioning to that, is something that we can't let us be impeded by, you know? And so, I hope that all of us continue to, you know, live our lives, but at the same time, feel compassion for what, you know, France is going through, because that's what we went through not too long ago as a country as well. So, with that, I just wanted to finally just say, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for going to the Economic Development Forum last night. I know I attended the one on Thursday at the Delhi Center. There were a few glitches there. I, you know, I, I know that there was some problems with the presentation, there was some delay, there was, there was low attendance, but I think after receiving some communications from you, after realizing that you were there, the director was there, and there was a much more robust turnout, and there was an effort to provide childcare, translation equipment, and do some better marketing, I think that we're on the road to cure and remediate some of those shortfalls that we had, so I really do appreciate that. And to echo my colleagues' sentiments, thank you to the staff, thank you to the community and the public. Let's consider ourselves very fortunate and blessed, because people in a community that we all love, I know I love Paris, and, and, you know, I've been there once, and I know that those people are full of life, and right now, they're in mourning, and so, we share that same pain with them, but at the same time, feeling very fortunate that we have a community that, that loves its city. So, thank you.
Thank you. For that, Councilor Meswah, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank staff, our EMT, our city manager, Chief Rojas, Chief Anderson, for all their hard work and effort. Our city's great, thanks to all your work. Also, I do want to disclose that I attended the Hispanic Creo Conference in Orlando, Florida from November fourth through the sixth, through the sixth, and I was a little disheartened because I expected something completely different, and, but anyway, I'm not going to get into the details. But, I attended, and nonetheless, it was a good experience to be there, even though it wasn't what I was expecting. Also, I do want to welcome Victor Negrete and Julie Castro to our city, to our city family here, our newest members, so welcome. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy with your families, and I hope everyone comes back rested, if, hopefully, some people are having some time off during the holidays. So, have a great one. Thanks.
Councilor Reyna, please.
Thank you very much. As always, we live in a desert, so make sure you conserve water. If we're lucky enough to get some rain the next couple of weeks, make sure you don't water two days after that. We really are doing a great job of, of conserving, not only at the city level, but at the state level. But this really is a historic drought and a serious issue, so thank you so very much for conserving as much as you possibly can. In saying so, I just want to promote that Relay for Life is getting ready for next year's event, and this is an organization that comes together to fight cancer, which is a horrible disease that transcends any kind of line that you could think of, rich, poor, Republican, Democrat, tall, small, it really doesn't matter. This is something that the entire community can rally around and, and show some support. So, please sign up for, for the Relay for Life if you have not done so, to do so. If not, you can join my team. Second, Santa Ana Youth and Government just returned back from their statewide conference. Three thousand five hundred students throughout the state of California ascended on Fresno to learn model legislation in preparation for their Sacramento trip, and definitely want to give the Santa Ana delegation's president, Alfredo Torablanca, a humongous shout-out for being appointed one of four statewide chaplains. My understanding that there were several students that had applied through this process, and lo and behold, a young man from Santa Ana was one of the cream of the crop, so definitely kudos to him as we go forward. As we're getting ready for, for Thanksgiving, you know, this is definitely a time to reflect and a time to be with, with friends and family and extended family. At the same time, in this time, there's a lot of family that are not home. There are individuals that are by themselves for whatever reasons. Please remember them and reach out to them and include them in your own circle as we reflect on a, and a time to give back, and a time that, that we are all human beings, and we all feed off of each other, and we have comfort when we are together, and we share the sorrows and we share the triumphs together. Let's keep that in mind, and as we say that, I did want to give out a little bit of a, of a recognition for a few organizations that are getting ready for Thanksgiving. This Friday, November twentieth, Seven Eleven will be hosting its third annual Thank Heaven Meal. Twenty-seven forty-five West McFadden from two, I'm sorry, from twelve to three PM will be serving some food and, for Thanksgiving. As well, a brand-new welcome business into our community that just had their ribbon cutting was Jalapenos on Bristol and Warner for Thanksgiving from eleven to one. They are offering free food as well for the community that are in need of a Thanksgiving dinner. There are a lot of caring people in the community. Please reach out to them, and thank you so very much for, for opening your home and opening it up to, to the community. And with saying that, as Thanksgiving is, is fastly approaching, Christmas is right around the corner, please shop Santa Ana as much as you possibly can. Thank you so very much. Happy Easter.
Happy Easter. Happy Thanksgiving. There you go. It's good to be happy. Go ahead, Councilor Ben Avivas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Easter to you too, Councilor Reyna. You know, there's, there are a lot of, always a lot of good things going on. Before we celebrate Easter, tomorrow night is the Christmas tree celebration, so if it's okay with you before, before searching for eggs, we'll, we'll light up the tree tomorrow. And, and, you know, it's important to support the city, support local business. Tonight, on our agenda, we voted to, to support our downtown businesses by way of the, the Business Improvement District that downtown businesses benefit from to be able to promote the downtown there. We also, recently, I was at Main Place Mall and saw a lot of the improvements, the, the, both entertainment in the, in the, the round-one bowling, two new restaurants. entertainment and the, in the, the round-one bowling, to new restaurants, a lot of investment coming into the city. Last, because last council meeting or two back, we voted to approve some partnerships with the auto mall, some of the dealerships out there that are expanding as well. So, a lot of good things going on in the city, and it's a great, as a council, to be able to support and get behind those. And it's also, I think, important to look at the both end, looking at those positive new developments and investments, and also to look at areas where we can, where there is need for improvement. I think it's, it's important for us to not lose sight of that as well. So in light of that, one of the things I'd like to ask our City Manager and our staff to look into, on our, on our council agenda tonight as well, we, we voted to, for some of the security that is needed in the, in the library. The concern with the Santa Ana Senior Center there on Third and Ross has been a recurring issue, and I think it's some of the same concerns and some of the same reasons that we have, the security, private security at the library to make it a safe environment for our visitors. So, I'd like for us to look at just different things that we might do, measures we might take to be able to provide some support to the Santa Ana Senior Center. Did want to, tonight as well, we looked at the expanding parks. There's a need for parks throughout the city, and we took some initial steps towards a few potential new parks in the city as well. I did want to thank as well our various members of our staff. There are pockets in our city that, even though there's, there's investment and new development taking place in certain areas, there are pockets that still need some improvements. Some of the families around Townsend and Rate recently reached out and expressed some of the, the concerns. Every so often, we have some ebbs and flows of gang activity and other concerns. And City Manager and the Police Chief were at a meeting with some of the leaders of apparent council that came together to express some of their concerns. And this last, this last week, members of various agencies, various departments of the city came out, walked that area. So I want to thank all the, the staff and who are part of that, and just look, look forward to some, some action steps that we might be able to take to be able to respond to some of those, those real tangible needs there, and hopefully we can continue to build a model that has been successful in alleviating some of the concerns there, and replicate that throughout some of those other pockets and those other, other neighborhoods where there is, where there is need in the city to respond to, to make just a improved quality of life and safer, safer environment for our youth and our families. Overall, though, I do express a sentiment of my colleagues, that we have come a long ways, as Mayor Protem mentioned. We're grateful to be able to be in a position where just economically, the city, we're strong, stable, a lot of positive things taking place, a lot to be thankful for, both as a city, as, as members of the leadership here on the council, and just personally within our own, our own families. And so, I personally am, am grateful for my family, and I just want to encourage folks to just take some time to reflect and think about, sometimes the challenges of life can seemingly overshadow some of the good things, and I just encourage folks to, to take a pause and, and take inventory of all of the good things, all the positive things, our health and family and so many other things that we do have. So, with that, happy Thanksgiving all, and have a great night.
Thank you for those comments. I just want to say that we do have a lot to be thankful for, and Thanksgiving is a wonderful time for friends and especially family, so as we all get a break a little bit next week, let's do what we can to say thank you in our own way and continue to, to move forward and make the city a greater and greater city, and, you know, to share a lot of love and compassion for, for all that we encounter. So with that, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll convene again at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you.